In order to the eight regular meeting of the City Council in 2015, Lieutenant Clark will call.
Counsel Biden.
President.
President Counsel Cahill.
President.
President Counsel Capano.
President.
President Counsel Chakoudis.
President.
President Counsel Palucci.
President.
President Counsel Creighton. Captain Counsel Seer.
President.
President Counsel Floyd.
President.
President Counsel Lozey.
President.
President Counsel Annette.
President.
President Counsel Trahan.
President.
President Ten President.
Will please all rise for a moment of silence. Counsel Biden.
Mr. President, I have a special prayer for the Rocker family who lost their mother at the age of 99.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
The pledge of allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, the liberty and justice for all.
May I have a motion to accept the minutes from the 2015--
Yes, you do.
--Scott Washington, they don't have a habit. Before we begin, I'd just like to point out that Counselor Creighton is not with us tonight. He is doing his dual role as the State Representative, Brendan Creighton, as the House takes out their FY16 total budget. So he wishes he could be in two places at once, but unfortunately, that's impossible. So we wish him the best of luck in making sure that he gets as many goodies from the city of Lynn as he possibly can. Counsel Palucci.
Unless he has a twin.
Unless he has a twin, like Counsel Palucci, he can walk and sit here. Communications. We have communications from our friends over at Leo. If you'd like to come to the Cohie Informal, please identify yourself and a name and your address.
Good evening, I'm Kathleen McDonald with Lynn Economic Opportunity. My dress is Andover. Do you want that?
That's okay. I do believe you are related to William McDonald, so that's a good thing.
It's a rumor. I only use it when I need it. Yes, so I wanted to-- It's a 99 Abbott Street, Andover, Mass. And Leo is 156 Broad Street, Lynn. So I wanted to speak to you all tonight because of some of the services available at Leo have been extended application deadlines through May, which I think may be of great value to some of your constituents, especially those who probably called you often this winter with many desperate needs. One of our major programs, Low Income Heating and Energy Assistance Program, has extended application deadlines through May 15. And that means that any new applicants who need help with discounted fuel, with subsidized fuel, with any type of fuel-- It could be gas, it could be oil, it could be electric-- We can help. And this is a benefit for the working core. You would be surprised to learn the breadth of income range that we can assist. As a family of four, you can make beyond $62,000 collectively as a family of four. So to get a discount and to get fuel for your houses. If you're a family of two and you're making around $41,000, there's various guidelines on size of income. But we would encourage you all to share with your constituents, whether it's on the phone, one-on-one, on your Facebook pages. Just tell them to call and find out about these income guidelines. They may be surprised. We are in a situation where many people who already received our benefit, which is a subsidy, a cap, so a certain amount of money, ran out of their fuel in February in the midst of a massive winter. And when that news got out, many people thought we were out of benefits entirely. And that is not true. We have a certain amount of money per person that we are allotted through state and federal programs. So we can help new clients. In the meantime, we've received benefits from the Boston Foundation and from the United Way to continue to help the clients who are already out of their subsidies. So I would just encourage you all to share that news. We have people at our desks, at the Fuel Assistance Office, who speak Spanish, who speak Kamai. They speak several languages. Our staff actually speaks nine languages. We can help. So that is my message. I would also encourage any one of you to reach out, to meet with me, and I can share with you all of our programs that can be of assistance. We are the largest childcare provider in Lynn. We have over 400 children from six weeks old all the way through age 12 who participate in our programs with support programs for their parents, too. So I'm going to leave behind some Leo information, some brochures that have our deadlines for May 15 on them. And it's a pretty simple process to get that help. So if you have people in need, I hope you'll just please share the word. Thank you.
Kathleen, could you please give us the phone number for Leo and just repeat it a couple of times for folks at home to be able to write it down?
Sure. Lynn Economic Opportunity. It is 781-581-7220. And we do have evening hours on Tuesdays, but we are generally open Monday through Friday. And they will help people on the phone figure out if they're eligible or not and then come in for the full application process.
And that number one more time? Thank you. Counsel Lozey?
Yes, Mr. President, true to the President. Kathleen, I just want to thank you for your good work, both yourself and fellow colleagues at Leo, for all of the good work that you do. Lynn really needs this and we're so glad that you're here.
Much appreciated. Thanks.
Thank you, Kathleen. If there's any other additional information you may have, if you want to share with the council, and if anyone at home is looking for information, you can't get-- You're unable to take down the perfect, correct information for Leo, you can always call the City Council Office. We very much appreciate that. And for the good work you do. Counsel Palucci, you do not falter. Oh, yes, Ashley. Ms. McDonald, if you want to leave this with us, Madam Clerk has offered to Ashley include them in her office as well for folks coming in. Thank you.
I have no public care.
No public care.
None to be set down.
Zero to be set down.
I've finished business. I have none on the agenda. If anybody wants to bring anything else.
Anything of unfinished business, anything on the table that we wish to be taken off seeing-- Committee reports.
Public Works Committee.
Counselor Seer.
Well, I have two different calls. The first was to say I'm a public works committee and all votes taken for the unanimous call of committee, so I think a motion approved.
Second, let's see if you say aye. Aye, aye.
Anyway, you all have your chance. Not like it wasn't. But I'm sorry, it was-- There was one vote who was opposed. Counsel Wayne Lozey with black line opposed.
And to one vote.
But on the record, but Counselors--
Thank you for the clarification. Do we know that you voted against--
I still think--
Just for children. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And just for clarification, I just want to say for the record that I think the Public Works Subcommittee did an excellent job. They spent a lot of time-- All of the members, they've done a terrific job. And I agree with 99% of what recommendations they came out with. There's just one portion of it that I did have disagreement with, and so I did-- My vote was no for that reason.
Do we know the right-- Counsel Seer.
I just want to say that I haven't got to that part yet, which will be after the community reports. Because when you start the vote, it's actually in the new business, so--
Okay.
But I made it clear, we all thought that if you were opposed, because you were 99.1% fair, except for that one little spot.
Yeah, look at here. Hundred percent voting difference here, okay. So motions made to approve and second it, all those who say aye. Aye, aye, aye. Ayes had it. Move on to the next committee report. We'll go back to the council.
Next committee is the Ordinance and Rules Committee.
Mr. Board of the Committee, presentation of girl Saint, who's very informative, and we may have follow-up discussion on tobacco and related products for minors.
Fantastic. Thank you very much. Motion made to approve and second it, all those who say aye, opposed, no, the ayes had it.
Ways and Means Committee, we have a few things. Would you like--
No objection. We'll read them all together, and there has been a request for emergency, and we'll do one at the end as well. No objection, Madam Clerk.
Order that the City Control take the following actions. Transfer the sum of $5,000.00 from the reserve accounts of the legal expense account. Transfer the sum of $1,215.12 from the fire expense to the bill prior to the fire department. Certified as an available fund the amount of $1,494,439.00, as awarded to the city of Lynn by Transportation Board Bill Chapter 90 for fiscal year '16. And there was also a recommendation that I'll read now. Recommends that the Traffic Commission be requested to look into the feasibility of amending a one-hour parking regulation in the area around Ira F. Sullivan's on Central Ave, Rosetti's, and D'Amici's on Southern Street.
Thank you very much. Motion, Counselor Hamnett.
What unanimously voted out of committee would like to make a motion to accept.
Motion seconded, approved, and seconded by Counsel Biden. Any discussion? Sinon roll call.
Counsel Biden.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Cahill.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Capano.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Chakoudis. Yes, Counsel Palucci.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Creighton, Counsel Seer.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Floyd.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Lozey. Yes, Counsel Annette.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Trahan. Yes, Ten Yes.
Counsel Annette, was there an emergency in that as well?
Yes.
Motion made, seconded on the emergency. Any discussion? Sinon roll call.
Counsel Biden.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Cahill.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Capano.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Chakoudis. Yes, Counsel Palucci.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Creighton, Counsel Seer.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Floyd.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Lozey. Yes, Counsel Annette.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Trahan. Yes, Ten Yes. Safety and Public Health Committee, the following individuals were appointed constables. Anthony Santola, Lynn, Mass. And David Gold, Lynn, Mass.
Counsel Biden.
The unanimous board of committee votes.
Session made to approve and second it, Madam Clerk, does that require a roll call? Is that a voice vote?
No, it's just a voice vote.
All those who say aye, opposed, no, the ayes had it.
Licensing.
Counsel Trahan. The unanimous board of committee, motion accepted.
Motion made to accept and second it. All those who say aye, opposed, no, the ayes had it. New business. New business, Counsel Seer.
Thank you, Chairman. Under new business, as everybody knows, we formed a public works subcommittee. Before I get into that, it'll only take a few minutes, I just want to say, thank the following people. Counselors Ozavide and Billy Trahan. I'd also thank Mayor Kennedy and Jamie Sorrelli. EPW Commissioner Andy Hall. CFO Peter Karen. ISD Director Mike Donovan. Assistant Park and Record Board Stilius. Control Steven Spencer. Police Chief Kevin Carpenter. And Fire Chief Jim McConnell. As well as Captain Tom Hines for the Fire Department. Law and Order Director Dan O'Neill. And Stacy-- And Stacy Macho from Gliss. Also like to thank Counselors Capano and Chakoudis, who sat in on a lot of the meetings. And Jeffrey, I want to say thank you to Terry Young for the last 10 weeks of us at the side being working with us. Mary Adley and Jim Malata. As well as Jeffrey, who attended every city--
Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. For the last 10 weeks, we've been meeting as a subcommittee and going over the stormy moveable procedures in the city. And there was a lot of work that has been put into this. And these are only recommendations that I'm asking the counsel to approve and send to the mayor for her to take a look at it. And for us to work with her. And we're going to have another meeting in October when we start. I'll read off what Terry wants to read. And if anybody needs any explanation of any of them, I can do that. Would you like me to read it to you, Mayor?
I'll read it to you.
Okay. Number one, procedure for calling a snow emergency. When to put the blue lights on, when to indicate robo-calls, and maybe open up to cell phones. Websites. When to call snowplow contractors and tow companies and insert all this information into exercise tax bills. Work with the Lynn item and distribute throughout the school system what the procedures are. Number two. Possibly take a look at doing a parking ban from November through April on one side-- Have one side of parking throughout the city. We're also looking to eliminate some of the smaller trucks. The F-150s and Jeeps and limit the amount of 250s that we use for plowing. We're shooting for larger trucks and larger equipment. By doing this, we're also looking to raise the rates that we pay snowplow contractors. And we figure with the money that we're saving from eliminating the smaller trucks, we'll be able to give more for bigger trucks, which will actually do a lot better job on the streets than determined. Also taking a look at setting a new ordinance, and this is the one that Counsel Lozey had some issues with, which I can appreciate and understand. We're looking to raise the fine from $50 to $150 for parking on the street during a snow emergency. We're also looking to add additional personnel in the parking department during the winter months that would give out tables during a snow emergency. Create a tip line for people throwing snow back into the street. We're also looking to increase staff fine. A first-time offender is $150 up to a maximum of $300. And what this mostly is for is snowplower riders who are doing private accounts. We're taking snow off the lots, parking lots, and pushing it all onto the street after they've done plowing. We're looking to add additional blue lights, especially one down on the Lynnway at the request of Counselor Capano in the intersection of the Lynnway and Commercial Street. The one I just got, blue light system in the city. We're asking the mayor, Mike Donovan from ISD, to take a look at what the cost would be and to also include putting blue lights on schools and fire stations throughout the city. One of the biggest things that we're looking at is purchasing two pieces of equipment, which would roughly cost about $150,000 each. One for the East Lynn side of the city and one for the West Lynn side of the city. And with these two pieces of equipment, it would only be used during heavy snowfall in the city, but it would help to be able to remove the snow quicker from the main street so we can concentrate with the smaller trucks on the side streets and the terraces. And we're looking to have a follow-up meeting in October, bringing all the snowplowers, I don't know, or interest they're doing, and what we expect from them when they're out there plowing. So I don't think that anybody-- If they want to add more to this, they can, but this is the recommendation of the subcommittee. A lot of hours have been put into this, a lot of people have put a lot of time. And we met every week for the last 10 weeks. And I think Terry will be glad that this is--
Springtime.
Not in too long. My recommendation is that we send these recommendations down to the mayor and have her take a look at it and see if we can help out with making stormy moveable in the city a little easier and do a little bit better job than we've done in the past. Not just this past month, but in other ways.
But they then perform a motion.
This is a motion.
Subject made and seconded. Discussion.
What question? President.
Yes.
What there would be is a snowblower-type units that are doing front of loaded trucks. And they'd actually be able to-- I'm going to-- I know the number's a lot lower from what I'm going to say, but within two minutes, these loads would be able to fill up a tractor trailer, a side truck, 18-wheeler with snow, unless they're two minutes. So if we had going down the main street, Western Ave, Lynnfield Street, Eastern Ave, Jab, Chestnut, any main street in the city, we'd be able to clear the snow and widen the streets quicker.
If I may, from the chair, there's no objection. I would like to personally thank Counsel Seer and all the counselors and the folks who have been involved in this as well. As you know, 2015 was just a terrible winter. Tested our abilities, tested our equipment, tested our workers, tested our residents, tested our elected and appointed officials in the city of Lynn. And Counsel Seer took the bull by the disform, did exactly what he said he was-- We do, met every week, every Tuesday, whether council night or non-council night. Had a group of fantastic people in there, put together-- Most comprehensive document I think I've seen in every seven years, most comprehensive document I've seen put together by any council, councilor. And I would just like to say that I'm extremely impressed by the amount of work that was put into this. And as a resident and a taxpayer, I'm very satisfied with the amount of work and detail that you've put into this. You should be commended for this. I think this is a blueprint to solve a lot of problems that we've had over a long period of time in plowing in the city of Lynn. And it just proves that through cooperation and understanding and taking into considerations concerns of counselors or residents that you can put together a great plan or a moving stuff that's so important. So I really want to thank you, Darren. I think you've done a really tremendous job on this.
Thank you.
Motion made and seconded. All those who say aye.
Aye.
No, the ayes had it. And sent to the mayor.
Mr. President, Madam Clerk.
Counsel Trahan.
I'd just like to take a moment. I'd like to also thank Counsel Seer. He did a lot of work on this. He called me first, you know, right after the winter. He really, you know, he felt strongly about it and as he does about everything that he does, that he takes on. But I think we, you know, just because the snow's melted now, I want our greatest to forget about the winter because I know our constituents aren't forgetting about it. I know, you know, sometimes mayors tend to forget about it, you know, when they're doing their budgets. But I think we as counselors need to hold our mayor accountable. I think we all need to, you know, give her a call. I think one of the most critical things that Darren did in his list is that we need to increase the rate of the vehicles. We aren't being competitive. We did a lot of work on this. We aren't being competitive with the other cities and towns. And our local contractors from Lynn are leaving. They're going to sale. They're going to damage. They're going to badly because they're paying more money. And we're stuck with all the small trucks. We're a big city and we can't afford that. We can't afford to have little trucks when you get two and three feet of snow in a flat. So, you know, there's an old saying, "Big trucks can push little snow. Little trucks can't push big snow." And I think that we need to really, you know, instill in the mayor and kind of emphasize and really, you know, give her a call. Just a quick call, say, "Don't forget about the snow last year. Give us a little extra money in DPW. Let us do our things." I think it's going to be a critical thing. If we can get these big trucks back in Lynn, you're not going to have the problems that we have. These streets narrow and fire apparatus couldn't get around, you know, the police, the oil trucks, the ambulances. I mean, it just-- It was a terrible situation. It didn't even happen. And from the get-go, we lost it. We didn't push back the first storm. And we lost it because we didn't have the equipment to do it properly. So I, you know, just everybody, all my colleagues, I know our constituents are so upset. And it's just because we don't have the right equipment. We need the right equipment. We got to spend a few bucks, and, you know, this problem can be fixed. Very, very, you know, it's going to cost some money, but it can be fixed. And you won't have the problem, so-- I can't, I just like Counsel Seer, Counsel Biden, and everybody that did it on the board. They, you know, but you didn't mark their jobs. So hopefully, we'll see a great improvement. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel. Any other comments? Under new business. Counsel Capano.
Counsel Capano has presented a resolution. I'll just read the heading to it, and you can speak on it. It's a resolution against fast track for the Lynn City Council, whereas fast-track trade promotion authority is a type of trade policy that gives the executive branch the opportunity to negotiate out of public view as many trade agreements as it can during a given time period and send them to Congress.
Counsel Capano.
Yes. Thank you. Thanks for allowing me the opportunity to present this resolution. Really following the lead of Brendan Creighton, who has a companion bill in the State House right now, which would urge Congress to vote against fast track and the TPP. And to be brief, the TPP is the Trans-Pacific Partnership. If people remember NAFTA a few years ago, 20 years ago, many promises of jobs through free trade with Mexico and Canada. I remember GE saying there will be 10,000 new jobs created because of NAFTA. And as soon as NAFTA passed, they sent 500 jobs from Wellington Ametec Aerospace, which used to be the former West Lynn plant over here, right down to Mexico, as did many other companies. 687,000 jobs lost due to NAFTA, 2.7 million jobs due to China during the World Trade Organization. How does this affect Lynn? There are Lynn people that need good-paying jobs. They're leaving, and this TPP does nothing but pull the plug on what's left of good-paying middle-class jobs. So the agreement itself is being negotiated in secret by 600 corporate lobbyists. Even our congresspeople aren't allowed to read it, and never mind the public. So it's negotiated in secret. So I just would like to be on record as opposing this deal. The whole congressional delegation in Massachusetts, including two senators, Warren and Markey, and the rest of the congressmen, are opposed to fast track and the TPP. The only one that is undecided is Congressman Moulton. Last night, the Lynn Democratic City Committee voted to oppose this, as have over 200 labor and community leaders north of Boston. So I would like the city of Lynn, the City Council, to be on record as opposing fast track so we could eliminate the loss of more jobs. And hopefully, you know, we could turn this thing around and end this race to the bottom. Right now, even though-- Even if you didn't lose a job due to a trade deal, there's many companies around the country, especially ourselves, that are operating under two-tier wage systems where new employees are making, you know, half to a third of what the old employees are making. There's no more pensions anymore with companies with new workers in companies. Health insurance costs are going up and wages are going down. And this is all because these companies say they need to compete with these other countries. But they're writing the rules in secret. So they're writing the rules and they're complaining about competition. The only way you can stop this is to stop these trade agreements. So I would like to make a motion to pass this resolution.
Subject made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Counsel Biden.
Mr. President, I'd just like to go on record as a co-sponsor of this bill.
Thank you, Counsel Biden. Counsel Biden, you request your roll call?
Yes.
Counsel Annette.
Yes, as we speak, the motionable council delegates have made phone calls to Congressman Moulton right now to encourage him to vote against it. So as a delegate for the motionable council, I encourage everyone to do the same thing. This is very important to us. We cannot let it pass.
Thank you, Counsel Annette. Any other comments? Sinon roll call.
Counsel Biden.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Cahill.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Capano.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Chakoudis. Yes, Counsel Palucci. Yes, Counsel Creighton, Counsel Seer.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Floyd.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Lozey.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Annette.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Trahan. Yes, Ten Yes.
Thank you, Counsel Trahan. Any other, oh, business, new business? See-- Well, there could be some new business. Counsel Ford, would you like to make a statement?
Sure. I thought you were my own leader, mommy.
Well, we have a very special announcement.
Oh, no!
Well, I-- We have a very special announcement today from one of our colleagues, Counsel Ford, who has been a member of this esteemed body for nearly 18 years, is it now? Nearly 18 years. And I'm sure this is something that we all remember in a statement. And we're going to turn the microphone over to the distinguished gentleman, the Counsel of Ward 7.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. Ford.
After talking to my wife and family, I made a very hard decision. Briefly, with my transfer from Suffolk Downs after 23 years playing with racetrack, two and a half hours in traffic both ways. It's very hard on me. And I've looked into the possibility of retirement. And the best way for me to retire is from the council and-- In doing that, I wouldn't be able to run for another term. I was laid off two years ago, and that's another factor that connects my time, I was a council through that time, so it's another reason for me to retire from both. I'm also gonna be a grandfather, I'm always excited about that. I thought long ahead about this decision, and if everything goes well, and my stress level lowers, I may be back in two years. I just made a few notes. I couldn't pick 10 better friends, I couldn't pick 10 better people to represent their districts, and that had, through 18 years, I couldn't say that all the time, and right now, I couldn't pick 10 better people. But I have eight months left, and I'll do my best, and again, I may come back and get back after chasing Clucci's record. But I will not run, I won't be running for election to the Council Lodge, and thank you.
You will be serving your term, then, correct?
I'll finish my term.
So it's fair to say, in the next seven, eight months, if there's any problems with Ward Seven, please call your ward counselor.
Thank you.
We'll have a ceremony then, at the end of this, to properly commemorate you, but thank you very much for your service, Counselor. Any other new business or old business? Seeing none. Counselor Clucci makes a motion to adjourn, all those who say aye, opposed no, they have it. Your turn.